With that, we will move on to consent calendar. Are there any items under consent that people want to have removed for a separate vote? Separate vote? Not seen any? Are there items?
You know the chair?
Again?
Actually, I'm sorry, I was a little slow on the button there, but I would like to pull item J for a separate vote.
Got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So J will be a separate. Anything else for a separate vote? Okay, seeing not, this is for comments or statements that need to be made. I have two. It will be F and I. And it will just be a comment. Are there any others from? The council members? Okay, seeing none. Why don't we start with? Why don't we do F? That's a point myself as the voting delegate to represent the city of San Bruno at the annual business meeting of the 2021 League of Cities Annual Conferences in Sacramento. What also we always do too is have an alternate. Things happen. And so I want to, within this action, include that Vice Mayor Medina also be included as the voting and attendee alternate. And since we have the same last names, it would make it very easy on reservations. Going on to I. Adopt a resolution approving Amendment Number Five to Employment Agreement between the City of San Bruno and Mark Zaffarano, City Attorney. And I need to read this as is required by code and law. Per Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), Item 5I would approve a 2% salary adjustment for the City Attorney to a salary of $240,374, retroactive to February 7, 2021. There are no other changes in the compensation. And then we'll move on to item J. And if there's questions on any of that, we'll get through once we go to. Adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with W R E C O for design of the Huntington Avenue Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $916,945 and approving a $300,000 from Measure A funds. Councilmember?
Thank you. And so the reason I wanted this one pulled for a separate vote is that I do intend to not support this item. As the council may recall, back when this item first came to us for a decision on which option we would choose, I felt that spending the almost $7 million on a short stretch of bike track was incredibly expensive and not the right choice. I believe normally I would, you know, once a decision has been made, I would just support it and move along with it. But I think that this is another opportunity for us to rethink that decision, especially given all of the other shortfalls we've seen in our budgets. I feel that the additional $4 million that this option will consume could very well be spent on other projects, including repairing potholes and fixing other streets that the community has also prioritized. And so since this is coming back to us, I would offer to the council that, you know, that they perhaps reconsider that at this time. But I intend not to support that. I can.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your comments and explanation. I'd like to take two actions. One, I want to go ahead and take care of all consent items with the exception of J. Then I want to go back to J to see if there's comments and dialogue. And then we'll vote on that one separately. So at this time, for all items on consent other than J, is there any council action?
Motion.
Motion seconded. Third, and to go ahead and approve all items on consent with the exception of a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Now we will. Thank you very much, City Clerk. Now we will go back to item J. And Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Salazar. We had a pretty extensive discussion on this. And the, I was wondering if staff could briefly go over the project and the available funding that we have in grants for the design and the overall project costs. We don't have the money now, but when the, if and when the money becomes available, I think is what we talked a lot about. I totally understand Councilman Salazar's point. It is a lot of money. It is a short segment of street, but it's also a big part of the plan to improve bikeability in San Bruno. And just wanted to hear what staff had to say, just to kind of fully have it out here to go through this. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Sure. Again, City Manager Javon Brogan, thank you, Heywon Ritchie, for coming on the screen. I was going to turn it over to you after a few brief comments. So not to replicate the conversation that we had before, but certainly in light of Councilmember Salazar's question or comments and Vice Mayor Medina's request, we can certainly provide an overview. Just as a high level, connecting our downtown, our Caltrain to Tanfran and the job center that South City is planning just on our border, as well as what a reconfigured Tanfran is, connecting those two areas to a cycle track, separated bike and pedestrian path is critically important. Having a beautiful design is critically important. And the recommendation from staff was that doing it and also maintaining the travel lanes that are there is a important concept. And so that is part of the reason for the increase in cost from the original design. And as additional development happens along our transit corridors, having that bike and pedestrian path to connect the BART station simply to Caltrain, we do believe will generate in less traffic, less vehicle traffic, because people will be able to get to the job centers in our downtown using that bike and paved corridor. It is absolutely true that the project is unfunded. We do have grants that are funded and we are on a grant timeline to expend those monies. And so the money that we are proposing to do this work with and expend, meet that grant target. It is. Interim Director Ritchie, will you please give an overview of the unfunded amount? I want to say it's four, three to four million dollars at this point, but I just don't want to quote it from the top. But we are looking to cover that in a number of ways. Yes, potentially new grants, utilizing development impact fees or community benefits for projects both in San Bruno and that may occur outside of San Bruno that are adjacent to the area. Yes, it's true that any money we receive, whether it's development impact fees or community benefits, could go to any number of needed improvements in the city. And so I'm not saying that to counter what Councilmember Salazar said. But I just wanted to make that point that we are certainly striving to have a fully funded project and knowing that we don't want to do that to the detriment of some of our, of the resources we have today. Director Ritchie?
Yes. Thank you, City Manager Brogan. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Heywon Ritchie, Interim Public Works Director. Councilmember Salazar, I would like to address your concern regarding this item. I would like to clarify that there were two segments that were proposed for design, which is the first segment from Herman to Huntington, sorry, Herman to San Bruno Avenue, close to the Caltrain Station. And that half is fully funded with, you know, mostly grant fundings or some local match associated with that. But the direction at the time was to also look into funding the design for the entire portion. And so because the grants are going to the southern half, which is from Huntington to the Caltrain State, sorry, from Herman to the Caltrain Station, that is fully funded. And in order to do the design of the northern half, that's where the additional $300,000 appropriation is coming from, because the grant is fully funding the southern half of the project. And so I would say that, you know, we are able to do half with primarily grant funding. And so to consider not, you know, potentially denying the whole project based on a portion of that being unfunded. And to clarify, the southern half is, we're anticipating to be about $2.5 million to $3 million. And then the northern half is the $4 million that's currently unfunded.
All right. And just to clarify, yeah, the $4.2 million is the piece that is a concern to me, mostly because, you know, we did have a viable alternative that could have been completely funded with the existing funds, although not as elaborate and probably not as attractive as the one that we are choosing. But the additional $4 million, which has yet to be identified, I believe, could be used in a lot of different places. And I realize that this is an important segment because of the fact of it's connecting job centers to our transit points. But there's also been requests from residents to improve the cycle tracks from their residences down to the transit centers. And those aren't being addressed. And, you know, those $4 million, once we do identify them, could also be used for those projects. So, you know, really my concern here is that we, you know, we're buying the Rolls Royce. We could do with the Chevy. And we could actually buy a few Chevys with this money and actually get a lot more mileage out of this. So that's why I still really can't support this. But thank you for the additional information.
Councilmember Hamilton?
My understanding was that the principal difference between the option that we approved and the less expensive option was the, that the less expensive option removed a lane from Huntington. And that was the, that, I'm not voting for this because it's nicer. I'm not voting for this because it's, because I want us to have a Rolls Royce instead of a Chevy. I'm voting for this because removing a lane on Huntington, when we know that we're going to have thousands of cars going to that new center across the border in South City that are going to be using that every day, and hearing directly from our police chief, who's, where we have the police station on that stretch of road and he's, and hearing from the police chief saying that he would be adamantly against removing a lane from Huntington, those were the reasons that I'm voting for this, not because it's nicer or flashier. I agree with you. I wish it was cheaper. I do. I do. I do think this is a lot of money. And I do think that that money could be, if we were able to repurpose it to other places, that would be great. But that's not, that was not one of the options. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues on J? Just, I am, I had been then, as far as not wishing the lane being discontinued. I think it's just, I just find it challenging to have one lane on Huntington. In addition to, I think it's solidified with our chief, just concerned with safety and other elements and getting to and from locations from our department as well. But it is, the Councilmember Salazar is correct. We, City Manager is correct, there is a time element based from the $1.4 to the $2 million that Transportation Authority issued. There's a window in which to utilize that, but it is costly. There is no doubt, and Councilmember Salazar is correct about other desires from the rest of our community as well. Vice Mayor Medina?
Thank you. Great questions. Got to support my chief of police when he says to do not take a lane. My question to staff now is if they could provide some additional information on the scheduling of how long it's anticipated this design would take. And we would have the funding to do the southern portion. And when we secure the funds for the northern portion is when we would proceed with construction at that point? Is that correct?
City Manager or Director Ritchie?
I think part of that question with regard to timing, Director Ritchie should answer. And so Heywon, can you take that and then I'll take the financial?
Yes, it is on a fast track because we are trying to meet the deadlines. The Phase One design completion is anticipated in July and August. Because this is federal funds, there are quite a few hoops we need to jump through in order to obtain authorization to proceed with construction. But that is our current deadline for design.
With regards to funding the additional $4 million, as Director Ritchie mentioned, a portion is, or portion one is fully funded and there's a remaining gap. And so we are first and foremost looking to community benefits and development impact fees. There are a number of avenues there. I'll just frankly talk about two. We are actively in negotiations with the development that is planned to occur in South San Francisco, right at Huntington and Sneeve. South Line is the developer, or South Line is the name of the project. I'm actually blanking on the developers. Lane Partners is the developer. So we're actively in negotiations with Lane Partners for community benefits tied to that project. In addition, in just a few weeks, the City Council will have the Bay Hill Specific Plan in U2 Phase One that comes with a total financial benefit package of $130 million over a 20-year DA. However, as a part of that DA, there is a prepayment for Phases One and Two that will total $56 million. A portion of that is development impact fees and $26 million of that is community benefits. So the city could, should that approval happen and that project be the source, you could utilize those funds. We are, again, actively in negotiations with Lane Partners. And then there are other projects in the area as well, as well as the Tanfran, which I think will come later than the timeline for this, but there may be funds there that could be shifted around if not funded. So at a high level, know that we're working on it and know that there are areas. But we are, we are planning for that better tomorrow for San Bruno.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that good, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I don't think if my answer, like, we see the answer exactly when we rephrase the question. So the $4.2 million gap is for the northern portion? So we have enough funds to do the southern portion? Preferably you do it all at once. But if we had a hiccup in our budget, is staff prepared to do it in phases?
Yes, that is currently how it is structured in phases.
Okay. So we would, there would be a span of time where we would have the opportunity to determine where our funding would come from, being that the design would be completed July, August, and then it would go out for bid. We would see that decision be made, obviously, maybe October, November of 2022?
Roughly, approximately, yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to get a rough timeline. So there is time on our side there. I am in support of this project. I understand the cost of it. I understand the vision that we want to be able to have safe routes for bicyclists to go from Tanfran to the Caltrain Station. I wanted to express a little bit of apprehension regarding the agreements being negotiated with Lane Partners without knowing what we're talking about there. At some point, the council's going to be involved in that. So my concern is not being involved to hear what that is until the last minute. And I know how difficult it is to negotiate from the dais. So I would ask for some clarification as we get further down the road on that, to be involved in it.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may. So we don't necessarily need to find the $4 million by October. We have all the funding that's needed to do the southern half. And what this recommendation is, is that the northern half be designed so that when the funding does become available and staff does actively try to obtain grant funding. And if that were to be successful, that could be, that would be phase, that could be phase at a later date. So we wouldn't necessarily need to try to find the funding before then. I mean, if we did, that's, of course, they could be constructed at the same time. However, this project on the southern half is not contingent on having full funding for both phases.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify a few other points. So I am also definitely, absolutely in favor of safe bicycle routes. And, you know, if we really wanted to do a cheap solution, we could just paint green arrows on the street and have bikes share with cars, but I know that's not what we're after. And we did have a viable solution that was a much more affordable solution, in my opinion, that still would have given us that, although, as Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, it would have been at the cost of a lane. Another point I wanted to make there is that we also saw the traffic study associated with this showed that the traffic conditions would degrade to letter grade F, regardless of what we do, whether or not we take away the lane, it's going to degrade anyway. That's just, it's what's anticipated. So the traffic will become horrible. So I believe if PD has a concern, they should still have a concern about the location of their station. Fortunately, most calls for police, unlike fire, don't originate from the police station. And the units are out patrolling a beat. And they're in the community usually when the calls come in. And so they won't necessarily need to respond from that station, as I mentioned, as opposed to a call for fire, which would probably originate at Station 51 or 52. And so then, you know, that to me helps with that concern, although the chief did say it was a concern to him. I don't think that this particular option actually makes anything any different or any better. And if we are looking for a community benefit, I believe relocating that station away from an area that's so isolated and is inevitably going to be impacted would be something that we should be looking to resolve. And, you know, and I know that there is a lot of revenue that's being anticipated. We've put a lot of things in place that will start paying off as development continues. But I want to go back to something that our City Manager told us a while ago. And that was, if you find yourself in a hole, you stop digging. We're in a hole and this $4 million is another few shovelfuls of dirt that puts us farther deeper in where we are. And so when we started looking at revenue sources, it was to address existing deficits. And if we keep creating more deficits, we're not going to get out of the hole. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason, please.
Yeah, I just want to say, do you think it's important to have a lane provided? The 11,000 employees expected to go to the new facility that South City's building. And we don't know what's going to happen with Tanfran at this point. That could be a significant, you know, significantly more traffic. And I think the city is looking at alternatives as far as where the police department's eventually going to go. Where I think this council has been prudent financially was when we had Posey Park and we selected the, I think, you know, $1.5 million option that was less than the most expensive option that was proposed. But this really is an area where I think that we need to look forward and look at how we're going to mitigate traffic. And I don't think that we can, I don't know who it was, but at one point somebody said, like, wish cars away. I think it's going to be a long time before we get there. And hopefully by the time we get there, we have the money to, you know, carry out the plan that Councilmember Salazar sees, you know, sees fit, which I think would be great in the future. I did want to just actually jump in to make sure that the City Manager's clear on funding, because I know I walk around and people say, well, you're getting $100 million from U2. And, you know, I want to, I think it's important that we kind of set the stage right now. Do we have $100 million right now? And are we even close to that number? And I just want to be clear that my understanding is that unless the development occurs, we are not going to get that money. And so I just don't want anybody who's watching to think that we're sitting on all this money and not using it.
Sure. I can caveat that further. I thought I used a lot of ifs there. But absolutely, the U2 Phase One, as well as the Bay Hill Specific Plan, did receive unanimous approval from the Planning Commission and will be in the next few weeks coming forward to the City Council. City Council doesn't have to approve, so it is a recommendation. And so that's the biggest caveat, one, the City Council has to approve it. We approve the Bay Hill Specific Plan, and should you approve U2 Phase One, you still can't make anyone build. U2 has, throughout this process, this more than sort of $4 million endeavor on their part, just in city fees, has been concurrently processing their Phase One. And in our development agreement negotiations that is codified in the materials that went to the Planning Commission and will be before you, they have agreed to prepay the fees for Phases One and Two when they receive their foundation permit, which we anticipate to occur based on the current schedule in 2022. The revenue to the city for that Phase One and Phase Two payment will come in a number of buckets, development impact fees, affordable housing fees, area impact fees. I know these are sort of terms that everyone will not relate to, as well as community benefits. And so, you know, we articulated that at the Planning Commission. We will rearticulate all of that at the City Council meeting, at meetings, plural, that we will discuss that project. But yes, it is a, it is a planning effort and a property owner slash developer that is making commitments to invest. But until those investments occur and the, it is a 20-year development agreement, and so with five phases. And so there will be quite some time before that revenue is received in there. Certainly a caveat with development. So I hope that clarifies.
We also have members of the public, if you have thoughts or comments. I do see we have, somebody has raised their hand. If anybody else, please feel free to do it at this time. And City Clerk, if you could bring them in.
Yes, Paul Wapinski?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, if the plan is to use BART and Caltrain and ride your bike, why is traffic going to get exponentially bad? That's my question.
And that is the only hand raised. Mayor Medina, you are muted. I'm sorry. It appears that the mayor may be having technical difficulties. Vice Mayor, did you want to?
Got it. Give one second. He's giving me a call on the phone. Is this okay?
Sure. In the meantime, Councilmember Mason, if you want to go ahead.
All right.
Sure. In the meantime, Councilmember Mason, if you want to, go ahead. Your hand is ready.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Give me a call. All right, I'm good. The mayor is having technical difficulties. So there's a question from the public. Does staff have the ability to answer that question?
Sure. Let's turn it over to our city engineer and Acting Public Works Director, Haywon Ritchie.
Yes, thank you. I will do my best to try to answer, answer this transportation traffic engineering question. My understanding is that there is a model and built into that model is future growth that's anticipated throughout the region. And, you know, with increased population growth, there is increased traffic also modeled along with that growth. And so I believe the emphasis moves towards trying to make multimodal transportation more appealing and, and attempting to have more workers and people use public transportation and other modes of travel such as bicycling and walking.
Is the mayor's back, Mr. Mayor?
I think, I, I think I'm back. Thank you very much, Mr. Medina. Councilmember Mason, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know that generally I don't have any discussions with the public, but just from the last update that we had received from the new South City development, which will go through San Bruno streets. Mr. Wapinski, you may, you may, may not know, but they're anticipating 11,000 employees and building parking for 6,000 of them, which means that those 6,000 would likely be going through us, through our streets. And that doesn't include the Sky Park that was sold to Amazon. That's acres. That's, you know, a couple acres. I mean, apologies, that's, that's expected to have a number of employees, which we don't know yet how many. And that also doesn't include the Tanfran and what the plans for that are. So we know for sure that it's at least going to be anticipated 11,000 employees. And that's just the South City development. And again, they're, they're building 6,000 parking slots according to the last update that council got.
City Manager?
Yes, I was going to chime in after Director Ritchie and just add that what that traffic analysis showed for the area along Huntington is not atypical for transit-centered areas. Just on the balcony, in regions like ours, the expectation is that growth will happen around transit. This area is transit-rich. One-on-one, 280, 380 BART, Caltrain, high-capacity bus route, as well as a stone's throw from SFO. And so it's not surprising that any traffic analysis in areas of San Bruno, irrespective of, 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 of the projects we're talking about, will show an increase in traffic. And what is shown here is an increase even with additional multimodal bike and pedestrian. And so that is, I think, part of the rationale for doing this project is because the cycle track will increase multimodal transportation and provide that linkage to BART and Caltrain and those job centers in our downtown where we have Upzone too. And so over time, we'll have more housing units. And so having that connection is important to get people out of their cars to decrease the amount of traffic that we're having, that we will see, even though you're, the, the conversation we're having is absolutely right. Traffic will degrade even at the sort of no-project scenario that, that was analyzed.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing no more at this time. Is there any action from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Make a motion to approve?
There's a motion made.
I'll second.
There's a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
No.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries, Board of One.
Okay, that concludes consent.